To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The approval of the agenda.
I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Ackerman honoring excellence.
I have a lot of certificates tonight, could hardly carry them to the podium here, but we're glad to recognize several high school students here tonight as we're actually going to start, this was some news that broke last week and it's good news. Kayla Nelson, would you join me here at the podium? There's Kayla there on your screen. How exciting was this? If you follow our, some of our social media platforms, you would have saw this news. I'll share a little bit about this. The Northland Symphony Orchestra Association, also known as NSOA, is thrilled to congratulate Liberty North High School senior Kayla Nelson, who has been announced as the first place winner of this season's Young Artist Competition. Kayla plays French horn in the Wind Symphony and has participated in the Missouri All-State Band since her freshman year, earning first chair her junior year. Kayla plans to major in horn performance in college, aspiring to perform professionally in a major symphony orchestra. She has also had a great opportunity just yesterday, Sunday, right? You performed with the Northland Symphony Orchestra in their concert just a couple of days ago. Tonight, we want to congratulate Kayla Nelson for receiving this great recognition. I also want to make mention that it was a clean sweep for LPS in the Northland competition as Liberty North Natalie Coleman finished second overall while Liberty High School's Jillian Calder was third. So, clean sweep, way to go LPS in that competition.
LPS leads.
LPS leads, absolutely. We also made a lot of great news this fall. It's tradition, kind of in the fall, we announce our national merit semifinalists and I did not get confirmation, but I'm pretty sure this is the most we've ever had in Liberty Public Schools and a great mix of Blue Jays and Eagles, which is even better. Quick announcement about national merit semifinalists. Please join Liberty High School and Liberty North High School in recognizing the following students who we will introduce in a moment for qualifying as semifinalists in the National Merit Scholarship Program. This is a highly competitive academic competition. Students qualify for by taking the PSAT NMSQT test during their junior year. These students have the opportunity to continue in the competition to become a National Merit Scholarship recipient. We want to congratulate these students and as I introduce you, if you just come up here and join me and we'll just make a line here in the front. We will begin by introducing you to Liberty High School's Maxwell Hunter. Next, also, you can stand here Maxwell. From Liberty High School Chandler Nguyen. Also from Liberty High School Lacey Pecky. Another Blue Jay Aiden Wang. And one more from Liberty High School Yu Hao Zhao. That's a throwback Blue Jay right there, not familiar with that. Let's see, continuing on. Could not be here tonight, but let's give a round of applause Liberty North Drew Clausen. And also Natalie Coleman could not be here tonight, she has an after-school activity. Let's give Natalie a round of applause. And we will round things out with two Eagles from Liberty North, that being Caroline Diltz. That's a former Lewis and Clark Trailblazer. I recognize her, I recognize her. And then we'll wrap things up, another familiar face, that of course being Amy Gates from Liberty. Let's give these awesome scholars a big round of applause. And you may be seated and after we take a quick break here momentarily, we will try to get the group photo of all you in attendance. Again, we wish Drew and Natalie would have been here tonight, but we will definitely get them these. We also were going to introduce Natalie and we might see if we can get her next month as she had the perfect ACT. I'm going to invite her to our podcast and see if we can do an interview with her in the coming days. I want to thank Dr. Mychart for being here tonight, Liberty High School Principal. I know everyone's busy with conferences this week. I know Dr. Camp wanted to be here but got tied up, but appreciate Dr. Sharp for taking time out of kind of a busy week to come by and say hi. So, that will do it for honoring excellence here on this Tuesday evening.
Well, thank you. So, before you disperse, we'd like to come out and give our congratulations, so don't go anywhere. And we will reconvene at 7:15, does that give us enough time? All right. And then don't forget to get your picture taken. If anyone wants to speak to the board, cards are outside that door over there.
So, our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rule, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and to the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member.
I move the board approved consent agenda items 3.1 through 3.7.
Second. Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. On to reports from the administration. There are quite a few of them listed here. You guys have been very busy.
You have quite a few attachments under our admin reports. The first one this evening is 4.1 from Innovation and Learning with Dr. Julie Moore.
I have a little booklet to go with them.
You're reading all those pages?
I'm just going to go through the list. No, thank you. Good evening. We have a lot to report and highlight from Innovation and Learning. Just a couple of highlights from the actual report that I wanted to pull out this month as part of our strategic plan. We launched our professional learning modules for staff. That is on the insights page. We started with three modules, the graduate profile, competency-based learning, and artificial intelligence. And so, our hope is that staff who just want some more insight and maybe education about these topics can jump on and watch. They've got some videos, it's got some language over top, and then it's just got some slides of content. We're working on three more that we will share out in the next couple of months. And the goal then is with Dr. Sehorn's strategic plan on working on parent engagement, we're going to take some of those same modules and share it with parents, but tailor them toward parents instead of staff. So, one's about how you can use these in the classroom, and then the other one is just about kind of informing our parents and stakeholders about some of these initiatives. Also, highlights, our eighth grade visit started last week, and we'll have two more. That was two schools that did that, and we'll have two schools that will do them again this next week. Those went very well. And then, we had the Entrepreneur Fair at Hy-Vee. We had 15 students who participated in that. One of the highlights was a student on Sunday morning who had been there Saturday, came in, and she had already made $500 plus. And so, her mom was like, "I just couldn't even imagine that, you know, this would have resulted in that." So, I thought it was a great success. That's one of the areas within real world learning that we're really trying to grow. So, we were very excited for those results. I think I mentioned last time, we were getting ready to do Panorama, so we wanted to just share a couple of highlights on that. For students in grades three through five and six through 12, the biggest increase was school safety. So, we wanted to share that 5% increase for students in grades three through five and 9% increase in students six through 12. So, we thought that was really good to see. And then, there was a large increase at the secondary level for school climate, and then that also was a large increase for staff. K-12 was school climate. We'll share more of those results later, but wanted to highlight those. Also, this month, we have annual reports from Dr. Schmitz, Andrea Sumi, Christopher Hand, and Erin Money. If you have any questions, Michelle Schmitz is here, she can answer those, since those directors fall under her supervision. And then, I just wanted to personally share two exciting things that have happened this past month that highlight Liberty Public Schools. I think this has been mentioned a little bit, but we are participating in Education Reimagined, Ecolab, and Ecosystem Lab. And so, I had the opportunity to go to Brooklyn, and Liberty is the only traditional pre-K through 12 school in the country that's a part of the lab. So, that's pretty exciting that they're asking us to be a part of, like, how really do, what is the title of the group? It's called Reimagine Education. So, I know that we've done some work. I know Dr. Tucker highlighted this in his board report as well, but that was a great learning experience, and we'll be able to kind of come up with some ideas and work on those over the next year. And then, Scott McLeod, who's one of the leading experts in the country on K-12 educational leadership, had reached out and had asked about doing some questions on graduate profiles across the country. He said they were looking at graduate profiles and just seeing, like, if schools actually use them, or if they were just a poster on the wall or something that was on our website. And they only talked to 15 schools across the country, school districts across the country, and Liberty was one of them. And so, when I asked, you know, "How did you pick Liberty?", and they said, "You know, we looked at your website. We know that Liberty's done a lot of great things, and we look, and it looks like you're doing amazing stuff, so we want to find out if that's actually happening." So, I thought that was just an honor to be able to talk to them about the work that our teachers and our principals and our coaches are doing in the classrooms every day.
What was that group that contacted you?
Education Reimagined. Oh, that was the first one. And then, Scott McLeod was the education consultant. Yeah. Very exciting. And that is all I have. Do you have any questions?
I would just like for you, either you or Dr. Schmitz, to pass along to Christopher Hand.
Thank you.
His message with the story in there about how that child's results were read out was what every teacher thinks about and looks at, and what we want to do for our kids. And so, it was, it was very touching to read that, and I'm glad he put that in there.
Thank you.
Not that the other ones weren't good.
No.
But that one was just a little bit different and a little bit more personal, and I appreciate him putting that into his front page, which, as we all know, is one of my favorite places.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else for Dr. Moore? Thanks, Dr. Moore.
Thank you.
4.2, then, Student Equity and Access Report from Dr. Audrey Dixon-Sehorn.
Like Dr. Moore, I have quite a bit to share. I don't have as many attached reports as she does, but I do have a number of things that I would like to highlight this evening. First of all, the building equity cadres, as you know, were facilitated at all of our 19 schools. That was led by Dr. Nathan Hostetler in the month of September, and so now, we're at a point where action steps that have been developed are now being implemented until the teams reconvene in March, April of next year. What I want to place emphasis on is that we had approximately 171 LPS staff, so that includes our school leadership, certified staff, classified support team members that were part of those cadres. And Angie's favorite part, 73 student representatives this year, grades three through 12. And when we compare that to where we were last year, that's pretty significant when you look at the increase. That last year this time, we had about 157 staff total for both semesters and 65 students total last year. So, the momentum is definitely picking up, and we're recognizing that that student voice component is very, very important. The next thing I wanted to share is that our directors for each of our departments, academic side of the organization, operations side, have engaged in one-on-one consultations with me in the planning and development of their equity action plans for this year. We are now in our fourth year of implementation around this work, and our focus is really about building equity leadership capacity and in creating an organizational culture that fosters a sense of belonging for staff, for students, and for families. And so, you do see those individual smarty goals that they've written in the report. And so, we'll share out again towards the middle end of the year on the progress that they're making with those goals. Wanted to highlight that Liberty Alliance for Youth had hosted Community Action and Poverty Simulation on Wednesday, October the 9th. There were approximately 50 participants in attendance from various sectors of the Liberty community. The prosecutor's office was represented, the City of Liberty, the Clay County Sheriff's Department, as well as a number of directors and counselors and other staff members from our district were there. And so, I've already kind of put a bug in Dr. Tucker's ear, hoping that at some point we might be able to bring this simulated and immersive activity to Liberty Public Schools. And that, as a matter of fact, I believe Dr. Sharp was there as well, so thank you for that. Also, would like to mention that as part of additional grant funding that we have received from the Children's Services Fund, middle and high schools will be implementing this school year, the Hope Squad. And as you know, this is a peer-to-peer suicide awareness and prevention program. And so, the sponsors that have been tapped into at each school site by school leaders will be responsible for organizing the Hope Squads at each building, and we will have a full-day PD for them coming up in person here at the District Administration Center on October the 25th. And so, I'm hoping to have an opportunity to sit in on that PD and be a learner as well. Also pleased to announce for second year, for the second year in a row, that English Learner Development Program is providing adult classes, English classes, to families of LPS students. So, Krista Peck, our ELD coordinator, and Dr. Charlotte Daniel, one of our ELD teachers, they will be the instructors. And so, the first session will run from October through December. They'll be held once a week, and then the second session will be held in February through April, and they'll convene at Liberty High School from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Almost finished. The Special Services Department hosted an open house for the brand-new best-in-ESB classrooms at Liberty North High School this past Friday. I do want to publicly thank Jen Bauer and Karen Rogers for being in attendance at this event. And also, last evening, there was a college, career, and community fair for students and families in Special Services on yesterday evening at Liberty High School, and this served as an opportunity for connections to be made for those families with local agencies and service providers. And then, last but not least, you should see the annual report for Special Services included in this monthly report as well. So, that is what I wanted to highlight. I know that was quite a bit. Not all of it was in the report, but I felt it was noteworthy to share this evening.
Any questions for Dr. Dixon-Sehorn?
No, it's no questions, just appreciation for Special Services, just continuing to find those pockets of need and finding ways to address them. I think, you know, the career fair and the college fair and all that that happened the other night, I thought was a really excellent way to kind of help families as they make that transition, not knowing what all is available to them. And I just, I have seen that consistently over the last several years.
Yes.
And I think it's been great. So, thank you to them.
Kudos to Dr. Cook and her leadership team for the vision that they have for the Special Services Department.
I know you track a lot of different things and kind of look at demographics a lot of different ways. Have we ever, I was reading an article this week, and it just made me wonder, so if you don't have the answer, that's fine. Do we look at families that would, I guess you'd call it, housing insecurity, you know, who may not be homeless but are?
We would track that within our Student Services Department.
Do we have, so you have a?
We would be able to have information about where there are some needs in that area.
It falls under McKinney-Vento, and so, we do track that data. I think, so internally, we track it that way as it's reported to us and go through the process of ensuring those students are enrolled. That's one piece. The other piece is some of that data probably shows up in our demographic projections as you look around the district in terms of, you know, neighborhood composition, price points on homes, and so forth. It also shows up in our census data as we kind of look at poverty levels and poverty rates by zip codes. Yeah, we can come at that at a couple of different ways.
Couple of different angles, right. So, if there's something specific that you're wanting that we could definitely?
No, I just, I mean, once, when I read it, I was like, "Well, obviously, a lot of people." But I had never thought of that before, and like I said, I know we sliced it a lot of different ways, and that was just one that I hadn't thought of.
Hadn't considered before.
But it does make sense as we're trying to be sensitive to different groups and trying to meet them where they're at.
Absolutely.
And things like that, so.
And there was actually a call earlier today with the Commissioners Advisory Council, and that topic of McKinney-Vento, like, process and procedure came up, in that it's multiple things. Where a student who is actually electing not to live with their parents technically has a place to live if they want to go home, but technically ends up being a McKinney-Vento student. And so, it's a lot of different factors following that homelessness, so. Anything else of Dr. Dixon-Sehorn going once?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it. Next, then, is 4.3 in our finance report with Ms. Cindy Sullivan.
Good evening to you all. I have one donation to recognize tonight, and that is a monetary donation of $1,000 from Charlie's Car Wash to the Lurdi High School. That will be used for classroom supplies, so we appreciate that nice donation to the high school. Tonight, I wanted to share something with you that we don't talk much about, but it directly affects our revenue, and that's the state revenue picture. From time to time, I will mention that, but in the last couple of years, that's been positive, a really positive thing, and we haven't had to worry too much about a proration of the state formula like we have in the past. But this year, in the latest state release of the general revenue report, I just wanted to highlight that state revenue has declined 4% this year from September of last year. Although September showed an increase overall, the state revenue is showing decline. And why that should concern us is there needs to be revenue collections in order to pay out the appropriations for the state money that comes to the district. So, I think we are going to watch that a little bit closer than we have in the past, and I just wanted to update you periodically on that. We just don't talk about that very often, but I did want to bring that to your attention. So, we often talk about property taxes and how that affects our revenue, but this is another big piece of that, so I did want to bring that to your attention tonight in addition to the other items in my report. I also wanted to share that the Audit and Finance Committee did meet last night. Thank you to Mrs. Rogers and Mrs. Bauer for being there and watching that meeting and the report from the auditor. The Audit Committee had a lively conversation with the auditor. They are very engaged in that process, and I do appreciate that engagement with him from that committee. He did tell them that they ask quite a few more questions than most of his other audit committees that he reports out to. So, that should be something you like. But anyway, they did have a good conversation with him, and he will be here later this evening to present that report to you as well. And then, they did review the rest of the financials and get the report from the administration. Did not have anything to pass along to you this month, and with that, that's all I needed to share with you tonight. I want to share questions for me.
On your point about the state revenues being down, how long has it been since that has been the case? I mean, roughly, the COVID?
The last time we, yes, the last time we were talking about that is when they did withhold revenue during that COVID year.
Okay.
And then, we had the ESTER funds and the monies that came in to support COVID through that process.
Right, so it kind of?
Yeah.
Came to the rescue.
Yes.
And so, we really didn't have, the last time it occurred, we really didn't have to reap the repercussions.
Correct.
Because of COVID.
Correct.
Can you tell us what percent of our revenue comes from the state?
About 45% of our operating budget.
Say that again.
45% of our operating budget.
And that, I mean, that's going to have some interplay with 727 and some of the changes you've seen there.
Correct.
Also, state tax cuts, which is going to impact that revenue number.
Correct.
Possible have a change of administration if the state passed.
Yeah.
And you also have supplemental appropriation requests, both in this fiscal year and the next fiscal year that are already being talked about.
You've got the litany of everything that keeps me up at night.
Yeah.
So, they start reforecasting to school districts of what they're going to start holding back just in case, or?
Well, no. So, right now, we're not even paid out the full amount that we're due. We're only paid out what comes in. So, that state adequacy target that drives our foundation formula is technically prorated right now because the money's not come in to support it at the level it should be. Now, the thought and the hope is that as the year goes on and the revenue collection comes in, and they, much like we, wait on tax revenues, that it will catch up with where it's supposed to be. But currently, we're not even receiving the full amount.
And that's the purpose of our fund balance, to kind of hold on till December?
That is what that savings account, well, yes, that's what that savings account is for. However, if the SAT never gets up to the amount that it's supposed to, then we are relying on that savings account even heavier. That's when things, you know, really, you want that to be there, but you can't live off of that perpetually, so, yeah. So, I just wanted you to be aware of that, and that's just one more thing to add to all of that list of things that we're going to be watching over the next three years, especially with 727 coming into play.
Other questions of Cindy before we let her go? I did have to apologize to her because it dawned on me last night, she had two back-to-back evening meetings, so thank you to Cindy and Denise for helping facilitate the Audit and Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Next, then, Mr. Anderson, as far as 4.4, Operations Report.
Good evening. A few items to present tonight. First, we're kind of in the season of capital planning for next year, so we're engaging all the various departments and buildings to get their requests in the system. One thing I'd want to share here tonight is, if you recall, on that overall allocation plan, that shows some of those bond allocations, if you recall, we included some major capital projects that were part of the capital plan but are already kind of budgeted within the plan. So, the overall, I guess, un-dedicated capital projects list is going to be lesser this year because we already have some pretty big projects kind of in queue for the next couple of years, but we'll still get quite a few projects done over the next couple summers. So, that, the other thing, it's mentioned in Jason Bright's section, the Enterprise Fleet Management Program. We've got a few more vehicles in, a couple more coming, and I think once those are in later, I think next month, that transition is complete, so we'll be fully over to that system. Appreciate his hard work in kind of making that transition occur, and I know all reports to date have been very positive as we've kind of worked through that. So, so far, so good. Kid Zone, in their report, they highlighted the Lights On After School Program, which is a national school age care recognition night on the 24th of October. Appreciate that team. And one other thing I thought was interesting that she highlighted in her report of the 122 staff members, that 31 of those 122 are actual LPS students, which is fantastic. That number is way higher than it's ever been. And then, another 38 are college students. And so, one, that's fantastic. It's great to bring that into the program, but as you can imagine, those folks are pretty transitional into other stages of life, so they come and go pretty quickly, but they're a great asset to the program. Last, thank you for all those who were able to attend the tours tonight. We hit four of the construction sites. Everything's kind of moving along really well. And then, just in preview, I think it's December, we're anticipating the next round of bids, bidding activity come forward to you all for Liberty High Phase Two and Heritage Phase Two. So, those are the next two very significant projects that we have, and after that, I think the only really major bond project would be the, there's some other minor ones, but the LMS field project would be probably later into January, I think, as it's tracking. So, but again, everything's kind of tracking really well overall. That's all I had. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you for setting that up. It was very enlightening to see what those spaces are shaping up to be, and also, probably pretty surprising how quickly they're going to be finished.
Definitely usable spaces within the year.
Yeah.
And we'll have another round as we get closer to completion.
Yeah, definitely.
To be able to go back and see the final.
The never-ending story.
Anything else for Mr. Anderson? Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to welcome Cindy Sullivan back to the podium on behalf of our Human Resources Department and Dr. Marriott to provide talking points from her report. All questions can be directed to Sarah Marriott.
I do not have any HR hat on. I'm reading her.
Other duties.
We actually got together and made lists of questions.
I know, I know. I don't want that job. No, thank you. Dr. Marriott does send her regards, and some things that she wants to highlight in addition to the report that she provided to you include the district's ongoing work with Kelly Services. She wanted to make sure that you realize that we do have a full-time substitute at each building with two at each high school, and this building level sub provide an additional layer to ensure that building staffing levels are met. Through the end of September this year, we do have a certificated fill rate of 95%, which, in my opinion, is really good. So, I feel that Kelly Services is doing a good job, and that's my opinion, not HR report, and I'll get back to her later. Hard not to weigh in. Pending your approval tonight of the benefit renewal recommendation, the HR team is ready to launch benefit renewal meetings and provide additional benefit education as needed to facilitate the employee benefit enrollment. Open enrollment does take place October 23rd through November the 5th. Team Liberty met last two weeks ago, and they will meet again on November 4th. The team is focused on developing the 25-26 academic calendar options for the LPS staff to review. Additionally, the Administrator's Salary and Welfare Committee met yesterday for their first meeting of the 24-25 year, and will meet twice more during this year to provide their recommendations to Dr. Tucker. And then, finally, on November 14th, she wanted to share that the district will host a higher education fair for LPS employees interested in pursuing a degree in education. Seven universities have RSVP'd to the event. It will be hosted at Liberty North High School beginning at 3:30 p.m. Substitutes, paraprofessionals, and Kid Zone associates have been invited to event. That's what she would like to share.
So, since you're giving opinions.
Open yourself up to questions. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Lastly, then?
4.6, Superintendent's Report.
Couple of highlights just to mention as we approach the end of the first quarter. We do want to thank everyone across the Republican Schools for a successful opening to a new school year in first quarter. Of course, parent-teacher conferences are taking place this week. We were talking with Dr. Sharp earlier as far as the high school coordinating, a couple of other activities and events that have brought families to their campus, a little bit more so than usual maybe, whether it's learning more about college opportunities or completing the FAFSA and going about and connecting with their students, teachers. So, we appreciate the creativity across our system and ensuring that we're connecting with families. Earlier, we held in the Kansas City area the very first national conference, really, entitled New Pathways Conference that was in collaboration with the Ewing Marion Kaufman Foundation and Getting Smart, which really was an effort to showcase the work going on around real-world learning. So, many of our districts, both on the Kansas side and the Missouri side of the metro, hosted site visits. Edge Micro School hosted a site visit not too long ago at Liberty High School, also had the opportunity to serve on a panel. That then takes us to the real-world learning strategic planning process that we're currently involved in. Dr. Moore and myself have helped participate in that. We're in the writing stages right now. Dr. Moore and myself have helped participate in that. We're in the writing stages right now with our partners at Kaufman Foundation. And we'll likely see the next real-world learning strategic plan come forward as far as kind of what the next several years look like. So we'll share that information with you. In addition to that partnership and other networks that we're part of, we did a bit of a divide and conquer over the course of the last several weeks. As Dr. Moore mentioned, her time in New York through the Education Reimagine Ecosystem Lab, focusing on learning about home bases, learning hubs, field sites, and shared service opportunities. We sent Dr. Schmitz to California to take a look at Lindsay Unified School District as part of the League of Innovative Schools. Additionally, tomorrow, I think we'd have engagement with, it's a virtual meeting with our actual network partners in terms of learning and sharing the work that we're doing in our district as well as with partners from across the country. So that's exciting, exciting work. Lastly, I want to mention the Success Ready Students Network and working closely with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. If you followed along, you'll recall, we submitted and approved and were approved for the Competitive Grant for Student Assessment by the federal level to the tune of about a million dollars for those member districts that are part of the network. The next phase would then be submitting our application for the Innovative Assessment Demonstration Authority, which will likely occur later this coming spring as far as consideration at the federal level. So we'll keep you up to speed as far as how that progresses over the course of the next several months. It also dawned on me that the next time we're together will likely be after the election or the day of the election of our study session. And so please be mindful of what's on the ballot, not just our elected officials and who to consider, and also a variety of amendments. The numbers are two, three, five, seven, and A, I believe, if I'm tracking all of those correctly. There are a couple that do impact public education, namely the legalized sports gambling. A lot of great commercials going around, so be educated on that in terms of the impact on local schools. Along with, I believe it's Amendment A that speaks specifically to minimum wage as far as what that looks like. And so knowing that we are not affected by that, but at the same time, public entities would certainly want to remain competitive. And so please educate yourselves as far as what that ballot looks like. Additionally, in November, on November nineteenth, we're planning on hosting our Board Candidate Filing Workshop. That typically is from around five fifteen to six PM for anyone interested in learning more about board service. That then leads us to the month of December as far as the filing window for board candidates, which that window opens on December tenth and runs through December thirty-first. And so we'll be sharing more information about that in the coming weeks, gearing up for our candidate workshop, but then also making information available for those that might consider filing for the filing window as far as board candidacy. So with that said, we'd open it up for any questions that you all may have with me. On that, that grant that you spoke of, so that grant, you said it's coming to the Missouri group? Yes. And it's specifically for reworking or proposing assessment mechanisms? So the, the grant application precedes the waiver authorization. And so the grant was, in collaboration with DESI, submitted on behalf of those first twenty districts that were part of that first innovation waiver, of which Liberty is included, to the tune of about a million dollars. There were about nine other states of varying degrees that were also awarded similar grants to design new assessment structures and practices. The important part about the grant application is that that caused us to have to put a plan together to apply for the grant. So like the skeleton of it is in pretty good shape as we get ready to submit the waiver request. That's part two. That's where you take your skeleton and it becomes a lot more descriptive and detailed. So that's worth it. Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Unfinished business.
So you have, the first item under five point one is our insurance and benefits utilization information. You have about nine attachments that were added. And I appreciate our friends from Holmes Murphy being with us this time last month to walk us through the renewal. And certainly want to express our thanks to Team Liberty, to Dr. Marriott, to Miss Sullivan for their leadership and their teams and helping us get to where we are this evening. Just as a reminder, when we think about insurance utilization, it really covers off health, dental, vision, short and long-term life disability, voluntary benefits, flexible spending accounts, employee assistance program, just to name a few of those coverages that are contained within. As was mentioned earlier in the HR update, pending your approval this evening, then our next step would be to open that window for open enrollment. That then will be from October twenty-third through November fifth. And so I appreciate the plan that the Human Resources Department has put together to educate our staff and our employees on making the decisions that are best suited for them and their families. So with that, we'd certainly entertain your consideration of our insurance renewal.
I appreciate Team Liberty's work on that always. It's just such a, such good, good, hard work that they put in. So I move the board approve the twenty-twenty-five Employee Insurance and Benefits Utilization Plan as presented.
Second. Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Five point, our five point two then is some board policy updates. It includes both policies as well as a couple of administrative procedures. These are presented to you this evening for your consideration and action, as we saw them last month at our September meeting. So we present those to you for your consideration.
Did you have concerns? No sirens? Comments?
Any questions? I move the board to adopt policy EBBC, GB1, GBE, GCBDA, GBBDA, IGBA1, IGBE1, ILA, JFCL, and JG.
Oh, I think you missed just.
I missed a letter?
You missed, you missed a couple. Yeah.
All right. We'll let Nick do those from now on.
I second. Enough of this conversation.
Log the motion as it reads, not as I said.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, new business.
We do have a couple of course proposals under six point one. We'll turn it over to Dr. Moore to speak to these this evening. This is just first read, no action required. But Dr. Moore, you want to speak to these items?
Sure, we have two course proposals that we would like for you to consider. The first one is for an ACT prep course. We currently offer this in the summer only and then obviously find ways to support students outside of school. But from feedback from parents and students, we felt like it would be wonderful to offer it during the school day as an elective course. We're looking at our FTE right now and whether we could offer it just as a standalone ACT prep or if we could maybe do like for students who, as you know with the ACT now, you can retake certain sections. And so if a student really wants to improve their, their English portion or their math portion, that we could kind of tailor it to those students, personalize it for them. So that is the first course. And then the second course is AP Computer Science Principles. And that would replace a computer programming course that we already have, which is a semester course. AP Computer Science Principles is year-long. It's more of a survey course. And it also allows students in their freshman and sophomore year to take an AP course, which is more, it's again more of a survey course. It's very broad. But the, the hope is that they take an AP course, they want to take more of those, but also that they become interested in different areas of computer science, computer programming.
So as a freshman, sophomore, you, there is an AP test for this? I mean, is actually?
They could test for it, yes.
What do we currently, what would they take after they take this class? What, what subsequent courses would follow this?
This would allow them to then maybe look at our chaos courses. I know that it likes, likes the title of that. Chaos courses, which become a little bit more specific into different areas. And then our hope is that within the next month or two, we're also going to be doing a partnership with Juul on some cybersecurity. So really starting to think about how to become more, into more of a specific area.
So this wouldn't be a prerequisite for those? It would just be kind of a follow-on?
Ultimately, we recommend certain courses, but we try not to put a lot of prereqs on courses.
Dr. Moore, I see. So it, it looks like it would be offered at both high schools?
Yes.
And, and we have personnel at each high school that, yeah, so.
And again, taking an existing course and just reshaping, reframing that, extending it into an AP opportunity. So you'll see this again in the month of November, but take a look at it. And then if you have any questions, please feel free to let us know, and we'll go from there. So why is the ACT prep at Liberty High School open?
Liberty High School wrote the course proposal for it. But when we do a course proposal like this, both schools have to agree to teach the class, to offer it. So it would be offered at both schools. It's just that the Liberty High School took the initiative to write the proposal.
Any other questions? Okay. More to come on that one. Six point two then is an annual requirement as far as appointing our TIF commission representatives. You have the motion language that's reflected in your packet. I do want to point out a couple of things. This is both for the city of Kansas City as well as the city of Liberty. So would entertain a motion to appoint Jen Bauer and Stephen Anderson to represent the district on both tax increment finance commissions.
Nick's got the next motion, I think.
No letters in it.
I got it. I'm happy to pass on.
I move Liberty School District Board of Education herein approve the appointments of Jen Bauer and Stephen Anderson to represent the district on the Tax Increment Financing, TIF, commissions of Kansas City, Missouri, and Liberty, Missouri in all matters relating to TIF plans, TIF plan areas, TIF projects, and all amendments thereto which affect in part or in whole areas within the boundaries of the district. Said appointments are for one year from date of appointment.
Second.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Epstein.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Ms. Bauer and Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Anderson was a little concerned about this, I'm pretty sure.
Six point three then, our next item, is the Early Notification Incentive Program, also referred to as ENIP. And so you have an attachment that kind of speaks to that particular program that we've had in place now for several years in terms of trying to get advanced notification of people's intent for the following year, whether it's classified or whether it's certificated, just so that we can get a leg up as it relates to hires and expectations and forecasting. So we present that to you this evening for your consideration.
Still a beneficial thing, right?
Yes.
And this is, I'm sorry, trying to, this is certificated?
No, all the.
Is everybody?
I move the board approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five Early Notification Incentive.
Second.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item then, six point four is our legislative priorities. And while we've worked on this in a couple of study sessions, wanted to include it on our agenda this evening for our public, just to let them know that it is that time of year again as we go back to the drawing board to refresh or update our legislative priorities in anticipation of topics or issues that might surface during the course of the spring legislative session. And so I appreciate the feedback that you all have provided already at our study sessions. We'll be working on some language to bring forward for a review at our study sessions and again at our subsequent board meetings. You should have received in the Friday update last week some, some additional information just to better inform us as to what we might expect during the legislative session that was crafted by a couple of education associations, namely here in the metropolitan area, the cooperating school districts of greater Kansas City. We also included the Missouri Association of School Administrative Administrators Legislative Priorities. We know that DESI is working on their set of priorities. And certainly later this week at the Missouri School Boards Association Conference and the General Assembly, that will be the, the focus of the delegate assembly, I should say. So filing date as far as pre-filing of legislation is December first. We'll get a pretty quick view as to what education-related topics will look like and then certainly look to share our legislative priorities in a cover letter with all of our elected officials as we get on the other side of the November election, probably sometime in January. So again, be thinking about any changes, any additions, updates that we want to consider at, at subsequent meetings. Okay? The last item then, under new business, six point five, is the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Audit Report. And so we want to welcome from Westbrook and Company, Brian Eckhoff, who was here last night. Welcome back, Brian.
Thank you.
He actually has an auxiliary office just across the hall when he's here. They used to use an entire conference room. They've winnowed it down to, I think, just one desk. But I know Brian spent the evening with us last night talking with our committee members from our Audit and Finance Group, and we wanted to turn it over to him this evening for this item. So welcome.
Thank you. Is this where I am? You can answer? Okay. Perfect. I'm Brian Eckhoff with Westbrook and Company. We are going to do a brief overview of the financial statements. And if you have questions as I'm going through them, don't hesitate to stop me, and we can kind of discuss this if we're going. So on the first slide, you will see the Independent Auditor's Report. And this paragraph is the opinion paragraph. And you can see in the red box, it says that it is presented fairly. So this is a clean audit opinion or exactly what you want to see in your audited financial statements. This is the statement of activities. It's kind of a different financial statement because it has your expenditures down the left-hand side, offset by revenues through the middle of the page to show a net cost down the right-hand column. Normally, we highlight food service and community services here. If you look, you can see food service actually costs the district about six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars this year. And then community services was about nine hundred and sixty-four thousand. Food service, it's standard for districts to lose money on food service. However, you guys were one of my few districts that were actually increasing fund balance with food service for many years. And you'll see that on the next slide whenever we talk about the balances. But this year, you actually did have a decrease in fund balance due to your food service. The next slide will be the balance sheet.
Can you explain what community, what the community?
Community services?
Yeah.
That would be your before and after-school care, things like that, preschool, all those. Basically, if you look at the DESI function codes, it's everything with a three thousand function code and a sixteen hundred function code. So. The balance sheet, as of June thirtieth, we had about a hundred and fifty-eight million in assets, split between the three funds. Your special revenue fund, standard procedure to take that to zero. So your general fund had almost fifty-two million, debt service fund had about twenty million, and then your capital projects fund was about eighty-six million. And you can see at the bottom of the screen the various allocations. And I believe the next slide will actually give the details of those. So in your general fund, you have scholarships that are non-spendable, and you also have scholarships that are restricted. So that's the earnings on those scholarships that are to be spent on future scholarships. Down towards the bottom, you can see the assigned balance. The food service balance is one point nine million. So DESI says if you have made money on food service, you're required to track that balance, and you're required to spend it on future food service expenditures. This year, with a decrease in fund balance from food service, it actually decreased that. So if we have a few more years where we lose money on food service, it will obviously decline that value and then go away. If you continue to build a food service balance, DESI will ask you to come up with a method to spend that down. And then you have student activities, one point three million. That's your clubs and organizations, and that's the balances in their accounts. And then the remaining amount in your general fund is always shown as unassigned. That's the forty-eight million. And that is used for day-to-day operations of the district. Your debt service is always restricted, so the entire balance and debt service fund is restricted because that's by outside bond covenants. And then your capital projects fund, the. And then your capital projects fund, the majority of it is unspent bond proceeds of about $82 million. And then the remaining fund balance in your capital projects fund is committed for various construction projects that you guys as a board approved prior to June 30th, but had not been paid yet. So those are committed to those contracts. The next slide should be the Statement of Revenues and Expenditures. So current year, we had total revenues of 224 million, expenditures were 263 million. So we had a decrease in fund balance of 39 million. However, if you look, your general fund actually increased $5 million. So that's the operating fund. Your debt service fund decreased $21 million, and your capital projects fund decreased almost 23 million. So the majority of your decrease occurred in your debt service and your capital projects fund. So operations-wise, it was, it was a good year for the district. So. Next slide will show the summary of debt. As of the end of the year, we had about 203 million in debt. Started the year with 233 million in debts. We did pay down some debt this year. And we have about 12.6 due in the current fiscal year that you are in. And the next slide is going to show the detail of those bonds. You'll see a couple of balloon payments there in 27 and 28. So your debt service balance is getting ready for those. You should see an increase in your debt service fund balance for the next couple of years to get you ready to make those payments. The next slide should show the detail of your lease certificates of participation, just standard payments for those for four more years. And then the next slide should give you the five-year comparison of revenues. So if you look at this, you can see that your local revenues have continued to increase. Your state revenues have continued to decrease. And then your federal revenues, you can see the COVID years, the spike in the middle, and then it's gone back down to what it was before. So when we talk about attendance here in a little bit, you'll see your attendance has been decreasing. So that's the cause of the decrease in your state revenue. And your revenues have been increasing based upon the local support. So your local dollars are actually what is actually helping you as a district overall. The next slide should be a five-year comparison of expenditures. Overall, salaries and benefits make up about 77% of your expenditures when you look outside of bond activity. That is pretty standard. If you look at it, they are increasing at about the same rate as your purchased services and your supplies. So basically, all of your expenditures have been increasing at about the same percentage overall. So. The next slide will be a five-year comparison of reserve ratio and average daily attendance. Reserve ratio this year was basically 28%, 27.99. We consider that a healthy, financially-stable school district. However, if you look at the bottom chart, that's your average daily attendance. And you can see that we've had a steady decline for five years. And that goes along with the decline in your state funding for the last five years. So something to keep an eye on there. I'm seeing statewide that attendance rates are going down post-COVID. So the kids are not coming to school as often as they were. So it's not just here, but it's definitely something that you guys want to keep an eye on going forward. The next slide should be the state, state laws and regulations. While we're here, we look at your state compliance, whether there's any violations of state statute. Here you can see in the red box, it says fairly stated. So that is another clean opinion. So exactly what you want to see on the state side of things. The next slide will be the internal control report. We don't give an internal control, we don't give an opinion on internal control. We use it during risk assessment. We determine where we're going to spend additional time. Our auditing standards actually changed this year on internal control. We're actually required to fill out about five or six more checklists about your internal control this year that we've never had to do before. So we had to do some additional questions and things like that. Luckily for you guys, your guys' internal controls are very, very clean and very, very good. So we did not note any deficiencies in internal controls this year during the audit. The next page should be the federal programs audit. You have more than $750,000 worth of federal expenditures, so you're required to have a federal program audit, which means we come in and look at all of your federal expenditures, and then we test 40% of them. So while we're doing that, we give an opinion on it, and you can see at the bottom of the page, we did not identify any deficiencies. So your federal program audit was clean as well. I believe the next page will give the report of the federal. So unmodified means clean opinion or good audit report. No all the way down, except for the bottom one, is exactly what you want to see. So that means that there's no findings, no question costs. Towards the bottom of the page, you can see that our major program was a child nutrition cluster. So that's where we spent the majority of our time when we were doing our auditing for federal programs. And then the very bottom one, did you qualify as a low-risk auditee? And it's marked no. When they wrote Uniform Guidance, they wrote it for accrual basis financial statements, not cash basis financial statements. 99% of the school districts in the state of Missouri are cash basis. So that just means that you will never qualify as low-risk, do not change through accrual basis financial statements. Just know that we have to audit a higher percentage of your federal programs because of it. So. The next page is going to say no findings at all on the federal side. So that is a clean, clean opinion, good report, exactly what you want to see. And then I think the last one is the required communications. We had one minor detail. While we're here, looking at transportation, your ridership that was reported on the application for state transportation aid, there was a formula incorrect on the spreadsheet, and it picked up your total riders and your under one mile and overrun one mile. So it doubled up some riders. So we had to make a correction to that formula, which then changed what you reported to DESI through the application. So this is just telling you that we made that change and that going forward, you guys should put in some sort of procedures to review those to make sure they're accurate. But overall, it's a clean audit. It was a good financial year. Thank you for everything. We appreciate the staff. They're always very supportive and give us everything we need. And it's not like that everywhere.
Questions of Brian?
Those are really fast.
I talk about it. I know I do.
I appreciate it.
More in-depth last night from what I heard.
Two nights in a row.
Last night was a lot more in-depth. I think we spent 45 minutes, and I went page by page through the audit with them. So if you guys ever want to come to that, it's great material.
Thank you for that.
Two things reflected in there that are notable, one being your ESAR dollars rolling off. So that's, that's, that'll show up later on in subsequent audits and the absence of that, right? The other piece, just to underscore, and I think we do this from year to year, is just, I believe it's on page 19, Note E, as far as tax incentives and abatements and how that impacts our district. So from time to time, that may surface in the community as far as people asking how we are impacted. And so that's one of the things we can certainly point to as far as the audit report and findings that captures that as best as able. So we appreciate Westbrook working with our business team, business services team, but then also within the community to try to trap all of that in one succinct place. So. Other questions, comments regarding the audit? Maybe just entertain a motion then to approve the 23-24 audit.
Move the board approve the 2023-2024 Annual Audit.
Second.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Cheers.
Now we're down to Board of Education. Legislation, we've got priorities to look at. Filing is December. Advocacy, please remember that there will be voting on MSBA's thought processes for legislation on Friday, you said, Drew?
Friday evening.
Anybody who's here is welcome to listen and come and hang out, or Drew and AJ will be voting.
Thank you.
And then there is a list of upcoming dates, which has been lengthened. Goodness gracious, all the way to April. Wait a minute, let me, no, I was wrong. I knew I was. All the way to June 26, 2025. So, border marks. Anything, anyone?
I just came across another article that I glanced at just because of the headline. And it was talked, the headline was something like, "Some Indiana school finds a better way to assess how, how well schools are doing with their students." And opened it up, start reading it, and it's saying confidence-based learning, graduate profiles, tracking to see where they go. And I'm like-
Were you running a check for there? Done, done.
Could have read the article. It's not just in Indiana. Anyway, I just saw that and I was like-
Kind of how I felt about looking at the MSBA sessions and like, we already do that, we already do that, we already do that.
Right.
That's not untypical for MSBA.
And Indiana is one of those states trying to figure it out. Utah's another one. But I read a similar article actually today on the National Governors Association, which is bipartisan, which is working on a blueprint as to things that both political spectrums can align around. And it is a lot of what you've just mentioned at the Real World Learning Center down there. So there's a lot of momentum around rethinking, reframing, reshaping, whatever you want to call it. But Indiana is at the forefront as far as some of the work that they're doing along with a couple other states. So.
And I, I do want to call out, I think what Dr. Moore stated about people reaching out, finding us. I think we've done a good job over time at telling our story and being overt about it and making sure the communications are there front and center. I just, I want to encourage us to continue to do that and advocate for ourselves and be out there talking about it. And that runs not just from a district's standpoint, but employees and us as board members, et cetera. I think it's critical we continue to do that.
We need the trucker hats, the LTF trucker hats.
Well, and I mean, I think what it, what it comes down to is rather than having things done to you, lean in and help shape it and work alongside with a state department, whether it's at a state level or even at the federal level. But yeah, thank you for mentioning that.
And, and I also think kind of to Jen's point, one of the things that I have found in however many years I've been going to these, 10, 11, MSBA really goes towards hitting the middle. And there are not a lot of school districts that are as large as us throughout the state when you look at, what is it, 500-plus school districts? And so I think sometimes if we go into those conferences looking at, at what we can contribute to that workshop, because I think sometimes what we have to say that we may have gone through already, something that, that another district is presenting on, it's like, been there, done that, what am I going to learn? But you may be the person that's there that can say, we've also done. And then you're also doing, you know, some of the selling of Liberty, but you're also helping other districts move towards some of those things that, that we found that we've been able to do, and maybe they haven't quite figured out how to get there yet. So I, I mean, that has been the common comment about MSBA for us is we already do, just like you said, we already do so much of this stuff. But I think that's to our advantage that we can contribute then within that workshop and provide some information that may be helpful. And at some point, maybe provide, you know, a workshop or two. Who knows?
Sullivan is doing that. She's presenting.
I know.
I was going to shift gears a little bit, but was speaking with Dr. Dixon Sehorn before, while we were taking our break. And, you know, the expansion of the ESC and BEST programs and our two middle schools, so they're not just at two middle schools, and allowing students to go to their home schools, has been something great that Special Services is doing in, in terms of supporting the dignity of students and the inclusion of students. And so that's something I wanted to also point out and, and just express my appreciation for.
Any other comments?
I move the board to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you to Denise for giving us something to eat.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.